Is an adoption of the agenda and I need a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? I do not believe there's any changes or amendments or changes to the agenda. Is that correct, Ms. Blackburn?
Correct.
We have a motion. In a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We now have an agenda. The next item on the agenda is public address. And this is where the board sets aside three minutes, thirty, a total of thirty minutes with the maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. And at this time, we have one person signed up, and that is Connie Froggett.
Thank you Chairman Jones. My name is Connie Froggett and I reside at seventeen fifty-one Brush Mountain Creek Road in Montgomery County. And I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Montgomery County Educational Foundation with good news. Less than two years ago, a few dedicated volunteers decided to take a stagnant foundation and make it work for the schools of Montgomery County. Tonight, I stand before you to tell you we've done just that. I'm excited to announce that over the next three days, we will be delivering grant awards to five Montgomery County Public Schools. Thanks to the dedication and support from our citizens who believe in the importance of public education, we are putting iPads in the hands of elementary students at Auburn and preschoolers at Price Fork, Price's Fork. We are purchasing new orf instruments for Christiansburg Primary, helping Gilbert Lincoln start a greenhouse, and extending the site license for math acceleration software at Blacksburg Middle. There were some, including members of this board, who doubted this day would come, but it has come, and six months earlier than expected. You have in front of you a copy of the brochure and presentation we have been taking to community meetings, businesses, and civic organizations across the county outlining our plan for building this foundation. I'm excited to announce tonight that we now have a viable educational foundation in this county with a solid board of directors supported by a dedicated group of volunteers. We are building our membership list and our community connections. And most importantly, we are supporting our public schools with financial awards, and we plan to continue supporting our schools with two grant cycles every year. We want to take this opportunity to thank those who helped us get here. We would like to thank the small businesses that have supported us, such as Uncorket Inc., who provided our website and ad design free of charge. As a nonprofit foundation, we are funded by donations from citizens who believe, like us, that an investment in our schools is an investment in our community. We would like to thank those individuals, including three board members of this board, Ms. Albritton, Mr. Ivers, and Mr. Woolsey, for their financial support. And we would like to encourage the rest of you to set the example for your constituents and show you truly support public education with a tax deductible donation to the foundation. The brochure you have includes a donation form, and individuals who donate a hundred dollars or more are recognized on our website. Many of our citizens have stood before you, saying they would support higher taxes to help public education. But that decision is in the hands of our board supervisors. A donation to the Montgomery County Educational Foundation puts that decision back in the citizens' hands, because we are the only nonprofit organization that exclusively supports public education in Montgomery County. As the economy has failed, educational foundations have thrived, because individuals and organizations recognize the importance of a quality education. We are a fledgling organization compared to some of these foundations, but they had to start somewhere, too. And we think we're off to a great start. We invite you, the board, and the citizens of Montgomery County to be part of a growing organization that is making a difference for our public schools. Join us at www.m o n t c o e f dot org and support a school today. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all have signed up for public address. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address.
Good evening Chairman Jones, members of the board. Ms. Blackburn, I am Kelly Pleasant. I reside at twenty-seven thirty-seven Old Fort Road in Blacksburg, and I am the President of the Montgomery County Education Association. I thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. At your last board meeting on October sixteenth, I came before the board and presented you with a resolution supporting the current state laws regarding continuing contract status for teachers. A bill altering the existing continuing contract law was tabled during last year's General Assembly session. We have every reason to believe it is being retooled and will be reintroduced, perhaps in a new incarnation during the upcoming two thousand thirteen session. The current law supporting continuing contracts for teachers has been on the books since nineteen sixty-eight. It has ensured uniform employment practices as well as high-quality instruction across Virginia. Teachers are regularly evaluated and must demonstrate proficiency. Those who do not measure up face dismissal. It is a fair system for all involved. No one supports the notion that ineffective teachers should stay in the classroom. That's why Virginia currently has this system, requiring new teachers to successfully complete a three-year probationary period, and veteran teachers to satisfactorily pass regular evaluations. These laws are helping to retain high-quality teachers, which minimizes the cost in dollars and in student learning of high turnovers. There is a new teacher evaluation plan being implemented this year. The M C E A respectfully asks that you continue to trust your administrators and this new plan. The M C E A is asking for your support in opposing any effort to diminish or repeal laws that protect employees' due process. Thank you for all you do to support education and educators in Montgomery County.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Jennifer Mangle. I live at forty-five twenty Blue Hare Drive. Is that better? In Reiner. And I want to talk with you a little bit tonight about the experience my daughter and I have had with Virtual Virginia. I didn't know anything about virtual classes, but she, when she got her schedule this year, she was signed up for Spanish II as a virtual class. And I think virtual classes are good, because they give options, especially for smaller schools that have such restrictions with scheduling. She could not get into the regular Spanish class because of some of the honors courses she had signed up for, so she would have to drop an honors course to actually take Spanish with a teacher. Being that it was a language class, I was a little concerned how that was going to work. So before school started, we went to the school to speak with the counselor to find out, you know, how does this work? How does this look? Basically, she couldn't tell us anything. She didn't know anything about Virtual Virginia at all. And she just said, "Well, it's an online class." So we left with a brochure on Virtual Virginia, and we said, "Well, we'll give it a try. See how it works." The next problem that we had is there are cohorts, as far as throughout the state, when these different classes start. And because we started on a Tuesday, we missed the first cohort. So she sat in class for the whole first week and did nothing, because the next cohort didn't start until the following week. It's not part of the portal, because grades aren't given through a teacher, so I didn't have a way at first to monitor that. On August eighth, I signed up to get a parental account. I did not get that information in the mail until October the fifteenth. So that is two months after school started. When I got that, I immediately logged in and started looking at things, and I noticed she'd gotten a very poor grade on a test the week before that she hadn't told me about. So I talked with her. I said, "You know, what's going on with this?" She says, "I don't know. I didn't think I did that poorly on it." I said, "Well, you know, did you look it over and see what you missed?" "Well, we're not allowed to look at the tests. They get a grade, and that's all they get." So for anything that's graded, like a quiz or a test, it's password protected, and that is so, there's not cheating involved. But how is a student supposed to learn if they can't look at their coursework and know what they missed? So she had worked with a teacher on that and didn't get anywhere. So I see I'm running out of time here, but after a month of not getting anywhere, I called Virtual Virginia themselves, and we were able to work it out. But if this is something we're going to look into because of budget cuts, I think we need to do a little bit better job of how that works. There are lots of issues there. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Julie Snyder, and I live at eighteen oh five Tuckahoe Drive in Reiner. I have a daughter at AHS, and I wanted to share my budget ideas now, because I'll be out of town next week. In reviewing the cuts that you have suggested, I feel that you need to look at things besides teacher compensation and cutting teachers. All of us in various industries have experienced flat earnings due to the economy, but decreased earnings should be avoided for our teachers. While I know we don't want to close any schools, saving the utility costs at an old school might have merit. While there was a lot of concern and angst about combining Auburn El-, or Reiner Elementary with Bethel into Auburn Elementary, once we started in those schools, there was very little complaining. It was a gorgeous school, had great teachers, it had six hundred students, but it did a wonderful job. So it can be very successful. If one school has very costly programs that no other schools have, even if there's some type of busing or whatever that should allow people access to them, consider that. The busing is expensive, and it is limiting based on the student's time, as well as just the effort, the time lost in school. Make sure there's reasonable choices for high achievers, as well as those students who struggle, but draw some lines. We can't keep everything, so we have to look at everything, and that includes programs. Maybe we can't offer cosmetology, or photography, or small animals, or large animals, or whatever the class might be, because it's just not feasible anymore. But do concentrate your efforts on the things that are important, AP classes, help for the kids who are more challenged. This is especially true in extracurricular activities. Something you have to pay rent for, that works for a few kids, if there's a place to put that, that there is no rent involved, then that's a no-brainer, save that money. Carpooling occurs all across the county for all sorts of reasons, so really, that shouldn't be a limit. Some argue that sports have no place in school funding, but they hook students up with a reason to stay and learn. And so closing, shutting down middle school athletics will reduce those kids and limit what the high schools can do and hurt those programs. And when it's all said and done, it actually helps students succeed. So those sports need to stay. Pay to play is fine. I'll contribute extra to that any day of the week. But let kids do what they do best and achieve, and keep sports in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Next item on our agenda is the consent items. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull from consent and discuss?
Questions about the CMS, grades and good behavior award system? I was going to determine what behavior is what, and I just have many questions about programs like that, because they can be so subjective. So I have a concern with that, not knowing what's going on.
I've not read this grant, but it is one of the ones that was submitted to the foundation. So it's being brought to you tonight simply for permission to submit it for consideration for funding. Should it come back as one of the funded grants, the board would have the opportunity to reject it, and I'll certainly read the grant and be able to give you a little more information about that grant.
Okay, because I've never pulled anything from consent. So you're saying if it's granted, then we take action on it?
Yes. You're only tonight giving permission for the grant to be considered. When they write a grant, Laura, you hear? Yeah. Every grant that's written has to come to the board for approval to be submitted. And then if it gets funded, then you have the opportunity to reject the funding, because it comes back again to accept the funding of the grant.
As a foundation, we rejected that application, that grant, and it's not funded?
Okay, so why is it here? I'm not...
Laura, I'm gonna let you comment up. The policy, your board policy requires that the board approve any grant that's being submitted for possible funding. And then it comes back a second time if it gets funding and you accept it or not. Laura, is that right?
The grants come at the time of submission or as soon thereafter as feasible, and at that point, you approve the submission. In this case, I brought you all the grants that I was aware of last time, at the last time. And the foundation was so efficient in their review process that between last month and this month, they already reviewed the proposals and made their selections. But in order to be consistent with the policy that we've had set forth for us, I brought you several additional grants tonight, and I possibly none, I'll have to look at them. At least a number of them were not funded, but since they had been submitted and hadn't received board approval for submissions, I went ahead and brought to you to be consistent with that policy. That make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
There's also, there's a time lag between, it's about a week ago, when I submit things to go on to the agenda. At that point, awards weren't public. At this point, I believe, I believe that they are. Teachers have all been notified.
So Laura, if one of these grants were funded, does it come back for the board to agree to accept the funding?
No, not.
It only comes one time?
Right.
So if the board wanted to reject the grant, this would be the time that the board would need to reject the grant?
That's correct. If that, if we didn't already know the outcome of that, and the board was not comfortable with it, then they'd have that opportunity to do that now.
Okay. Well, it's kind of weird, but because of the subjective, subjectivity of this, what I have in front of me, I'm gonna ask that we pull this one. So I'll make that motion. However, we need to do it.
I'll second it if you have to do that.
Yeah, we need a motion in a second on the item, on item K, item F, I'm sorry. So we want to pull item F out of the consent?
There's a motion in a second. Discussion?
Yep.
Thank you. The, the foundation felt that this is not the type of situation we wanted to get near, and I'm glad to hear the board agrees.
Why is that?
I think... Yeah, because who determines what's good behavior, what's bad behavior? There's nothing in front of me to say that it is subjective to what one person thinks that this child's doing, that child's doing. It just kind of leaves things wide open for some not-good stuff. I just don't feel good about these kinds of things.
Well, I asked earlier, I mean, I personally don't agree with, at eighth grade, if you can't conduct yourself in the proper manner, there's other ways of dealing with it, and I'm not interested in a reward system, proper behavior in the eighth grade, so.
I would really like to hear more about it, to tell you the truth, why they were proposing this, more like Penny says, and what...
Well, it was rejected.
The proposal says that this is something that's been going on for a while in the schools, and what they're asking, and they were getting the awards from local businesses, and then they weren't able to, so they're asking the foundation to help fund that.
So it was a monetary award for behaving, I guess? I can't...
Yeah.
All right, if we have a motion on the floor to pull item F out of consideration for consent, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We've pulled item F out of the consent. Any other items under consent that someone wants to discuss? All right? Items approved on consent. Next item on the agenda is the personnel report. Need a motion to approve the personnel report?
Some move.
As submitted.
Second.
Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel report is approved. Next item on the agenda is payment of the bills. I'm sorry? Sure. Who did the second on the personnel report?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're quite welcome. Payment of the bills is the next agenda item. Need a motion to pay the bills.
Some move.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We have a number of grants in the superintendent's agenda also this evening. The first one is entitled, Microfluidic Platform for Accurate Sampling of Biological Signaling Events. This, this grant, I know it was a mouthful. This grant provides an opportunity for Auburn High School Biology faculty and students to be involved in frontline biological research, along with researchers from the Biological Sciences Department of Virginia Tech. The recommendation is that the board approve this grant.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Grants approved.
Next grant is Montgomery County Public Schools Project Graduation Two Thousand Twelve-Thirteen Academic Year Academy. This is a statewide initiative providing opportunities for students to earn the verified credits they need for graduation. Montgomery County Public Schools has applied for project graduation funding to provide remedial instruction during the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year for sophomores, juniors, and seniors who have passed the SOL courses but have not earned the verified credit they will need to graduate. Academy sessions will take place at each individual Montgomery County Public School High School on a schedule designed to meet the needs of the participating students and teachers. We've participated in this opportunity in the past. The grant's value is sixteen thousand three hundred and three dollars, and I recommend the board's approval.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion on the grant. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The grant has been approved.
The next grant is called App Nation: Algebraic Paths to Proficiency: Networked Assessment Tools for Individual Operational Knowledge. In collaboration with Montgomery County Public Schools, Virginia Tech researchers propose to develop and validate App Nation, a networked toolbox of six simple digital games using handheld touchscreen devices, iPads, that measure middle school students' ways of operating with fractions and algebra. Montgomery County Public Schools will collaborate on this project by allowing researchers to introduce educational apps in middle school math classrooms and conduct individual clinical interviews with students whose families have provided consent for participation. The participants will include at least eighty students in grades six through eight. The funding source for this grant is the U S D O E. I'm recommending the board's approval of this grant as well.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion on this grant?
Will this be for all the middle schools? All the schools, all the middle schools?
I believe this one is Blacksburg Middle School, if I'm not mistaken. Laura, do you remember?
Not, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
It says here, M C P S Middle Schools. So I was curious how it was going to work and how the students would be chosen. It says parental consent, and so I wanted to be sure also that students who might really need this, we reach out to the parents to be sure that we get consent for kids who really need it.
The supervisor of mathematics is, has worked closely with the researchers at Tech to look at where this can be implemented. In particular, they were looking at high-need schools as they wrote up the grant to the National, excuse me, to the Department of Education. But they'll work to place in classrooms where teachers are comfortable with the research being conducted and spread that among the schools.
Any additional questions, comments?
My other is reaching out to parents of kids who might, we want, might want in the program to be sure that...
Typically, the way it'll be implemented is if they will work with entire classrooms and would work with all the children in that classroom whose parents give consent.
So what if a parent doesn't give consent, and it's a whole classroom, and that's what they're focused on, using that?
There, there's components where the students would be using the apps on the iPads to reinforce concepts that correlate with the SOL, so that's something that could happen without permission, because that would just be part of the curriculum. And then there are individual, they call them clinical interviews, but it's really just a situation where the student would work with the iPad with a game with a researcher individually, so that they could learn about the student's processing. And those students whose parents didn't give consent wouldn't be part of those individual activities with the researchers.
But this would be a whole classroom at a time, not individual students?
Individual students within a whole classroom.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Grant is approved.
The next grant is Project Build: Building Inclusive Academic Achievement Via Peer-Mediated Embedded Instruction for Students with Significant Intellectual Disabilities. In collaboration with Montgomery County Public Schools, researchers at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro propose to develop and evaluate a model for professional development that supports the implementation of peer-mediated academic embedded instruction in inclusive classrooms that serve students with significant intellectual disabilities. In collaboration with Montgomery County Public Schools, researchers at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro propose to develop and evaluate a model for professional development that supports the implementation of peer-mediated academic embedded instruction in inclusive classrooms that serve students with significant intellectual disabilities. The funding for this grant is also from U S D O, U S D O E. Recommend approval of the grant.
Okay, it sounds good. But when we say peer mediation with severely disadvantaged...
Before you do that, I make a motion that we accept this grant.
Okay.
Say it.
Right now, discussion.
How exactly does that work? How are the children trained to mediate these type of children? I'm just not...
It's, it's teacher training. Go, go ahead, Laura. Yeah, it's teacher training.
The, the method, it's not peer mediation in the sense that we know it with, that we've dealt with in bullying and some other activities. It's a way of maximizing inclusion of students with significant disabilities by having them be able to work through tasks in their I E Ps in the context of, of the academic material that's being explained in the classroom. So while they may not be grasping each and every one of the concepts that are being addressed as part of the curriculum, they can work on the activities, on the goals that they have set for them in the context of what's going on in the regular classroom.
And when we define intellectual disabilities, would that include students who may have the ability, but for some reason say are not reading at grade level? Or is this more...
This...
How do you define intellectual disabilities? How do we do?
This, and I will not pretend to be the special education expert here, but this, this particular grant is focusing on students with significant disabilities.
I mean intellectually impaired, for the most part. You're profoundly handicapped, mentally handicapped individual students who are in inclusive settings.
This grant, the one proceeding that we approved, I don't see any measurements as to success. Was there anything that they had put in there?
Oh, absolutely. If these, the summaries are written by me, and I have to leave out something to... So I tend not to give you the details of the evaluations for the programs, but you can be certain that the researchers are extremely focused on evaluation, and the U S Department of Education is extremely focused on those sections of the proposals in order for them to be... to be competitive.
So what it sounds like for me is that children who are in a classroom and cannot fully participate in what's going on, they're going to be helped with what they can do.
That is correct.
Which is something with our inclusion program that has, for me, been an issue because the children sit there and it causes frustration. If this can help them focus on what they can do and still be a part of what's going on in the classroom, it sounds like we're moving forward with something.
And this particular work would focus on, as the superintendent said, on providing training to teachers to better enable them to create those situations in classrooms.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Grant is approved.
The next item is the first reading of a new policy in the Student Code of Conduct. The policy revisions that are presented here represent the direction of the board to change the way the Student Code of Conduct deals with students as first offense substance abuse incidents for possession of or being under the influence of drugs or alcohol. The policy revision includes a requirement to participate in a counseling and preventive services program and for the student to abide by the terms of a behavior contract. The policy revision is included in the link. It's the section on drugs and alcohol, and you also have attached to this policy for your information a copy of the behavior contract which the student would participate in and outline overview of the counseling and preventive services program.
I move that we accept these documents.
Say it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, this is the first reading.
It's the first reading. Oh, absolutely, you're right. You're right, you're right.
We can waive the second reading.
Unless you want to waive the first reading of the board. Yeah, I'd waive the first reading.
I have one question I thought of this afternoon is, should there be any community service in that or is that not appropriate for this?
The board talked about community service. The board talked about a number of other things, but what I've brought you this evening is the content that was last seen by the board and was approved at that point for movement to the policy.
And I guess the only time the parent is involved in this is, if I look at this, is at session eight. The parent is, I guess, involved at the beginning and at the very end, but in between the time the parent's not involved and I was hoping to see a little more parental involvement.
I would agree with that. How would you define parental involvement?
I'm not sure, Ms. Albritton, how we define it at this point. I would just say I'd like to see a little bit more parental involvement throughout the counseling session.
Well, the student and the parent both meet with the clinician in the first session, and then again in the final session you have the student and the parent. And per the board's directive, the parent is required to meet with the school official before the student can come back to school. So there are really three potential engagement opportunities for the parent and child together with an adult.
Is the signing of the contract by the parent at the beginning of the...
Yes.
That contract pretty much spells out, in my opinion, parental involvement.
Well, and it also says that the failure of the student to complete all the requirements of the behavior contract and the intervention program results in a recommendation for expulsion, and they would come to the board, and you would know that they had been engaged in this program and had not been successful in completing it.
And quite honestly, what we have seen, I have seen over the years based on the discipline stuff that comes in here, a lot of the reason that the kids are being forced is because there's been a lack of parent involvement. Okay, well, we're encouraging it by asking them to participate in two sessions and that's it. Well, three.
Three.
Well, I guess my question would be, what more would you want? I'm not, I'm not, I'm just stating my concern. I'm not the expert. I would leave that up to the people who have been working on this. As a board member, I'm stating my concern. I'd like to see more parental involvement, and if other board members think it's fine, that's fine, but I'm not going to direct the administration how to be, but I see our lawyer coming forward, and that's never a good sign. No offense to Mr. King. On his way up here, I'd like to state that it seems to me the experts have indicated that parents should be involved in three sessions. And I'm saying as a board member, I don't think that's enough. Okay? But you're leaving up with the experts. Okay. Saying three's not enough, so go back and tell me if you can do more.
I don't know where the three are. I don't see the three, Joe.
Dare I say, good evening? We have to tread very cautiously here because, for a number of reasons. Number one, the state law says that if you refer to a child to counseling, all you can do is make the referral. If the parents don't agree to it, you may not require it of them. So you could, so the default in this instance would be fine. This contract was an alternative to discipline. If mom and dad and child don't agree to participate in the counseling component of this, then we revert to the discipline. The second thing, we have this thing in the United States called a constitution, which has been interpreted to say that parents have the right to raise their children the way they want to raise their children. And as much as that may conflict sometimes with what we try to do in the classroom, we cannot dictate to parents how they raise their children. So we have to be very careful. The third piece is that by state law, they are required to sign a document that they have received a copy of the Student Code of Conduct, and they are, they can only be, there was a big fight years ago, you may remember, that they're required to sign that they received it. They have a First Amendment right to object to anything that you all would adopt as policy. And in its original iteration, the state law said they had to agree to support the Student Code of Conduct, but because of the First Amendment, that piece was eliminated. So in other words, when you pass out the Code of Conduct at the beginning of the year, they have to sign that they agree that they've received it, but no longer can they be compelled to say, "And by the way, I agree with it, and I at home will enforce your rules." So you're sort of in a quagmire. I think, my opinion is, you've gone about as far as you can go. That is, as an alternative to discipline, mom and dad were inviting you to be faithful participants in this counseling. We think it's in the best interest of your child, but if you choose not to participate in that regard, then we will impose discipline, or we reserve the right to impose discipline.
And with that said, as I stated before, when we, when this was moved, was put before us before, was that I didn't believe that there were enough consequences for the student. I believed that there needed to be some things taken away. I'm not going to support this until I see that it's going to, you know, have some kind of impact on that student other than what I see in front of me. Just leave that at that because I've already stated my opinion on it.
And I would like to see something in there to show some kind of community service. I think that really changes a child in ways that a lot of other things don't.
So based on what I'm hearing is that we're probably not going to waive the first reading, is that we'd like to go, have the superintendent to go back and take another look at this based on community service, again, maybe a look at the consequences, because I agree with Ms. Franklin, have always stated that from the front, that I don't necessarily see that this has that much additional teeth to it. And then bring it back for a second reading with modification.
We're happy to bring it back. It currently reflects exactly what the board directed staff to put in the policy, but I'm happy to add more to it if that's the desire of the board. But we're running out of time to implement it in the second semester. So if I bring it back at the second meeting in November, if we're unable to reach agreement at that point, I believe it would be unreasonably late to try to implement it even in the second semester of the school year.
Well, I would like to say one of my concerns is the same thing it was the last time we were talking about it. I have a problem implementing too much teeth to somebody who's brought ibuprofen to school. Okay? Now, you know, with being a drug offense, because that's still a drug brought to school, and they're not supposed to, and if they, I mean, rules are rules, and if this is what we're going to put teeth in, I think we have to be careful with what we're doing when it comes to that kind of thing. As I said the last meeting, I also think the teeth need to be in our room back in the back when the student comes to us, and I have instituted what I said I was going to do. So just with that being said.
I still would like to waive a second reading, and I'd like to address what Ms. Albritton had asked for. Make a motion, see if you get a second on your second, the second reading. I'm in discussion mode right now. As far as community service is concerned, we never mentioned that in the last time around.
Right.
And I don't know how a student would do that and continue to go to school because they're still in school when this is taking place. And I think that community service comes in when they come before us. I don't think community service should be coming in at the first offense. Anyway, I make a motion that we waive a second reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the second reading. Any discussion? Continued discussion? Since this is policy, I'm going to ask for roll call on this, please?
Yes, sir. May I have just a moment?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Ms. Albritton?
No.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Motion fails.
So we need to give the administration recommendation, as Ms. Blackburn said, this was, reflects the consensus of the board from our last discussion.
And I'm sorry to bring it up so late, but I know a lot of students that do after-school service, Saturday service. I think there are ways to find a way to give some hours if we wanted them to do that.
Let me tell you, my experience with community service wasn't so great. When my son happened to get a ticket for having a rack, we couldn't come up with ten hours.
Really?
Now, I understand that the court system's a little different than the school system, and we accept many things that the court system does not, but all he got was ten hours just because the truck turned over, so it was failure to maintain. It wasn't any kind of a bad thing, but he gave him that. We had to get an extenuating thing because we couldn't get ten hours in.
Not even at the Boys and Girls Club or something?
In nowhere. And this was with my help, me doing what I needed to do as a parent to get it in. They're just, this place was full, that place was full. They didn't need this with the holidays, the court system had done it. Now, granted, I understand the school system accepts many other types of things than the court system does, but the community service sometimes isn't as easy to obtain as you might believe that to be.
Well, we've heard people, you know, helping the town, and they could do that to ours after school. There are things that could be done. I think it could be.
As having a student, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with a child that messes up, having to make up for doing so, but I also know having a student that makes good grades and in honor classes, a lot of their evening is taken up with homework.
And I know a lot of kids in that situation who are volunteering, so...
May I ask, as a compromise, that we, since it's going to come back for a second reading, that we ask the superintendent to check with administrations on the feasibility of community service and have them come back with a recommendation related to that? I mean, what is...
I'm happy to do that. I would like to just restate exactly what's in the policy that's being brought to you this evening. And I know there's been a lot of varied opinions on this issue, and it started out with the board wanting to consider bringing students for first offenses to the board, and perhaps we're back at that point. Because actually, the behavioral intervention plan that's brought to you this evening is much more stringent than many children who return to school after having been expelled for a period of time. The behavior contract includes a five- or ten-day suspension, depending on whether they are a block school or a regular school. It includes a behavior contract that they must follow through on for a minimum of ninety days, which is a semester, and many kids will be longer than that. It includes eight counseling sessions, of which two involve the parent. It involves at least one direct contact with the school, and probably two because they have to sign the behavior contract as well. So they have to sign the behavior contract and they have to appear with their child before they return to school. And then again, if they fail to complete any piece of this, they're going to come to you for a recommendation for expulsion, and I would suspect that you would not take a very favorable view on the fact that they had not completed this program. So I'm happy to bring you back whatever you want, but I would tell you that in my professional opinion, this is a quality intervention with students for first offense, and it goes a long way from where we were, which was a suspension period.
I agree with you.
So if you tell me what you want, I'll put it in there.
I'll agree with that, but at the same time, I think the things that have been recommended this evening might be as helpful, very helpful, because it might prevent activity if students know this is what is involved. Because we hear over and over again about the problems with drugs, the problems with drugs, and this may, and we can try it, adding these things, may be a beginning of less use. If students know this is what...
What are you talking about?
If we add what I'm recommending, pending recommending, it may tighten it in a way that students might think twice before even a first offense. Does that make sense?
I don't, you said what you recommended. I have no idea what it is.
Oh, community service. I was...
And both you and Ms. Franklin recommended that?
No.
For me, it would be as simple as during this period that they were not allowed to participate in any extracurricular activities, you know, and/or not be able to drive, you know, on school property. Those two things would be simple enough for me.
But...
And it would not have to be both.
Right. They already can't participate if they have a first offense and they get expelled for, or not expelled, but out for five days. They can't play sports for that time period.
That's five days.
Or non, some schools it would be ten, right?
Whatever.
Right.
I'm saying that's not long enough. I'm saying for the completion, for them to complete this program, then that's when, that's how long that would be suspended.
It wouldn't have to be, not just being the driving situation or something like that.
One or the other, something, there just needs to be more teeth to it for me.
I would just like for our students to realize that we're serious about this program, and from what I understand, at this point in our history as a nation, it is the law, and I don't see that our students are taking it seriously.
Well, I agree with that, and I'm okay with the not driving, but as far as extra activity, I'll state my ground to, if you're keeping them out of that, then they're just going to go and do what they choose to do, and I think you're just opening up the door to problems, and that's why we got problems that we have.
Well, that's why she said, not necessarily take them out of the activity.
Right, but I mean, so I mean, if you want to put teeth in it somewhere else, but no, that's, but to me, if you take them out of extracurricular activities, then you're just opening the door for them to have free time on their hands, and...
Some of the students that we see are participating in extracurricular activities, and they're still, they still have this behavior. So if you say, okay, if you do this, you're not going to be able to do that. If you get suspended for this period of time, not just for the five days or the ten days, for the ninety days, you're not going to be able to participate. That's a whole lot more if, because they're already participating, or as a deterrent to say, "Don't do it."
I agree, but I also think it'll be a deterrent for those students for good.
We've got some star athletes and star students in other areas of extracurricular activity that sit in that room back there, so they're doing things they shouldn't be doing already.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
How, excuse me, not to belabor it, but it says eight sessions.
Excuse me, not to belabor it, but it says eight sessions, does that mean it's eight weeks or is it ever how long it takes?
Ever how long it takes, it doesn't have to be just eight weeks.
So you can complete it in eight sessions in four weeks or eight sessions in two weeks? There is no timeframe, it's how you get all scheduled in, right?
But it's unlikely that you would do multiple sessions in a week while you're in school.
You don't think you would do multiple?
No.
Well, I'm having a real problem with the fact that we, this is what we accepted. I guess the audience can't see it, but anyway, this substance abuse violation contract is what we accepted and all of a sudden, it's ready for voters to whether we want to continue with this or have it rework, excuse me, have it reworked and it seems to me that we're back in the same mode that we were in when we were trying to make some other decisions in reference to, I guess, pay for play and other things where we make a decision and then we have to pull the thing back and it, I mean, I think we're like Jell-O. And I think that caused me a great deal of problems that we seem to have a difficult time in tying a bow on most anything we do. And especially since we already said that this is what we wanted. I'm looking at this contract and it's exactly what we wanted. And now, the package is open again and we're going to redo it. I have a lot of problems with that and I'm amazed that the citizens don't call us out on this and say, when are you guys going to make up your mind on what you're going to do?
First of all, I'm not Jell-O, okay? And this is the reason you have a first reading by policy, is because you bring it back before you to make sure this is exactly what you want and you can ask questions just like we're doing tonight. This is not the first time we've had policy come before us and a first reading and had additional questions and send it back to administration asking for things to be changed. It is not, it was the consensus of this board.
Let me just say, don't raise your voice to me, you don't need to do that, I'm sitting right next to you.
Don't refer to us as Jell-O. Clear?
How about silly putty?
My point is that everything is an evolution. If you're working on a project or trying to come to decision, it's a process and I'm sorry, I didn't think about this before, but I didn't even think about it until we're just now discussing it, but to me, it's very important that a student in this situation and have some volunteer time given. If the board doesn't agree, it's okay with me, it's a vote, but it just has come to me tonight that I think that should be part of what's expected. Because I would really like to see this position so well ingrained in students that they will not come to school with drugs. And I think the more challenges we present to them for the first time offense, the less likely we may see drugs, I don't know, but I'm worth giving it a try.
And the issues that you're talking about, it was not a unanimous, not even close, they were four to three votes. And therefore, I am not Jell-O or silly putty because I take a stand on what I believe in and this is what I believe in, that there needs to be more teeth to this. So, you know, you can say a rock, whatever, but not silly putty or Jell-O.
I apologize to you, you do take a stand and I agree.
Any further discussion on this? Ms. Blackburn, do you have a understanding where we need to head?
No, sir, but I'll bring you a policy back.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is a budget planning update. As you know, we're beginning the discussion about the 2013-2014 budget very early this year and we're doing that for several reasons. First, we want to provide ample time for the public to be informed and involved in this process. We want to respond to the fact that we're in the second year of the biennium and therefore the legislative session will probably end early and that's a good thing because last year, we kind of drug this on and on and we're expecting that by mid-February, we'll know something about the state budget. Third, we are recognizing that Montgomery County Public Schools wants to address some budget increases, some of which are desired and some of which are required. And finally, we want to establish priorities for items to be maintained in the budget as well as items which the board may consider for possible budget reduction or cost containment, thus assisting the staff in trying to prepare a budget that you can support. You have received a budget calendar earlier in our discussions for 2013-2014 and it identifies January 22nd, 2013, as the date upon which the board will adopt a budget for a public hearing. And we all know that January 22nd will be here in no time at all. To support the board's discussion and to keep the public informed, we've prepared two documents since the last meeting and you have copies at your place this evening. One of them is a budget update and these have also already been posted on the budget website. It's a budget update information and it starts out with the banner at the top, the colored banner, looks like this. This one. And it includes a lot of quick facts about the budget and how we've gotten to where we are over the last several years and my hope is that this will help our folks who come to the November 12th meeting have some factual basis for some of the comments that they may make and also a way to look at things that have happened with the budget in Montgomery County Public Schools since 2008. The second document is called Montgomery County Public Schools 2013-2014 Budget Prep Breakdown and it's a one-pager with three charts on the page and it also has been posted on the website for the public's information. The key facts in the budget prep breakdown are that we anticipate some increased expenses and they're listed under 2013-2014 increased expenses. They include some things like restoring the pay-to-pay, pay-to-play budget cut, restoring two vacant maintenance positions that we cut for one year only, potential health insurance increases, replacing one-time money that came from the supervisors for roofs, for technology enhancements and for bus purchases. The unknown impact of sequestration, you know, will January 2nd come? And we have a loss of 8.2% in federal funds for Title I and special education. We have the VRS contribution still hanging out there and I think I've shared this statistic before, 65% of the school divisions in the state of Virginia transferred the whole 5% in year one and Montgomery County unfortunately was able to transfer only 1% and I would really like to see us be able to do the other 4% in 2013-14. And then we have the issue of employee compensation, which has essentially remained stagnant since 2008-2009, which was the last really change in employee compensation, other than a 1% increase that has occurred year before last. So we also have some anticipated revenue increases and if you look at the chart in the center of the page, you'll see that right this minute, I only know about $237,000 additional dollars for 2013-2014 and that's what was in the governor's biennium budget. It showed from the beginning as an additional increase for Montgomery County in year two of the budget. So to cover the budget increases, we've drawn this out as we either have to have more money, which I've just told you, we've got $237,000 from the state, or we need about $3.6 million from somewhere else and that could be a combination of federal dollars, additional state dollars or county dollars and to get an idea of what $3.6 million looks like, one way that you could look at it is that it would equate to approximately a five cent real estate increase in taxes at the county level, but that's not the only place you get money, I'm just trying to give you a way to look at it in relationship to some of the conversations we've had in the past. And you see the other half of the, or, we either get more money or we have to look at possible cost reduction measures and I've listed kind of a laundry list of things there, many of which came from the list that the board considered in 2012-2013. So the budget prep document is really a list of a menu of possible options for budget reductions. Finally, it will be mid-February at best before we know what the additional funding for the state will be. It'll be after the elections before we know what happens to federal sequestration dollars and we won't know about county dollars probably until much later than either federal or state money. So there are a lot of unknowns, we do know some things that we need and we do know some things that we want. Over about the last week and a half, I've had an opportunity to either have a conversation or an extended email exchange with each of the board members because I've been trying to determine what the priorities are because I want to really focus staff time and energy on bringing you budget options that are palatable and that I can garner support from the board forum. So as you can imagine, in the conversations, I got just about as many ideas as there are board members and so I tried to get my arms around it to know what recommendations to bring you, but I decided to try to take all the conversations that I had and create a summary listing of what emerged from my conversations with you. And it's not perfect yet, in fact, I'll tell you right off, there's one dollar cost value that's wrong on here and I'll show it to you, but it's red, red, white and blue and a little bit of black, so today's a good day for this particular color scheme. I took the conversations and I divided them up into things that I heard from you. The things that emerged as having some broad support in addition to each and every one of you telling me how important high-quality instruction is and how important safety is, there were a few things that came out as having some common support among the board members and I'm going to talk about those just a little bit. First of all, there appeared to be a desire for compensation improvement and possibly even the full 4% VRS transfer. And as you know, I've provided you in the past with some information that vividly illustrates the fact that our teacher salary and our VRS transfer position in 2012-2013 were not competitive with the surrounding counties. And I took a little closer look at 11 counties today and I looked at three points of reference. I looked at beginning salary. For beginning salary, Montgomery County, seven of the 11 school divisions that I looked at had higher starting salaries for teachers than we did. Then I looked at the midpoint and this is where we do the best. At the midpoint of the salaries, Montgomery County had four of the 11 were higher than us. And at the top of the salary schedule, six of the 11 counties that I looked at were ahead of us. And it was very interesting to actually do this analysis and see how our salaries compare. I also shared with you earlier that in the summer of 2012, we offered 40 teaching positions and of the 40, five of them, or 1/8, were refused on the first offer because of salary issues and the potential to have a higher salary in a neighboring community. So in the budget, and so I've got priorities on here, I have possible budget reduction measures, I have other possible reductions that were talked about as maybes and then on the very back of this paper, I listed a few things that were told to me by board members as something I absolutely could not support. So in the area of budget reductions and cost containment, there were also some commonalities and here they are.
What does that mean, can't support?
Means that...
We don't want to do it?
The person that gave me that said they could not support that specific thing.
Okay.
If you look at it, unless it has a number beside it, only one person said it. So that gives you an idea of just how many different things were talked about. The ones that have a number beside it had multiple board members who told me the same thing. So in the area of budget reductions and cost containment, there were three things that came out as possibly having some potential for discussion as we try to reach agreement on a budget. And they were, first, that there was some support for considering an increase in class size. There were five folks who said that they could at least discuss an increase in class size and I would point out again that 89% of our budget is in people and benefits and if you're going to find any significant amount of money, that's where it's going to be because there's only $10 million left in the whole rest of the budget. The second thing that was mentioned more than one time is that there was some interest possibly in a change in employer-provided health insurance. And then finally, possibly some interest in some school consolidations within the division. So all of these options were discussed and I would certainly frame them in these words and that is that even as a board member said, this might be something that I could consider, they said at the same time, these are all painful and this is the same discussion that we had last year, there are no easy ways to reduce the budget. Tonight, I offer you the two new documents that we talked about very briefly and also the summary and on the summary sheet, if you would go down in the blue to eliminate in-school suspension, I've got the wrong dollar figure there, I think it's $100,000, but I'll update it and provide you with the correct number. I forgot to take off the ones that we had already reduced and we reduced half of the ones in the middle school last year, so that number is not correct, but I believe the rest of them are. I need the board to establish priorities so that my staff and I can use them as we develop budget options, both for enhancements and for reductions, so that when I bring the budget back, that is a document that you can invest in and then we can ultimately get approval for. I look forward especially to the November 12th, the community input meeting and the special meeting at Christiansburg High School beginning at 7:00 because I really want to know what the community and the employees see as priorities for Montgomery County Public Schools and also what new ideas the community and the employees would bring for consideration as budget reductions. And that's one reason why we did the quick facts and spent quite a bit of time with that because it tells you a lot of things that have already been reduced. I will tell you now that I will not bring you a recommendation to further reduce instructional equipment or instructional supplies. There is no more money to be had from those accounts. They've been reduced 60%, 40% and we've invested very heavily in technology and we're struggling to buy the bulbs that it takes to operate those projectors. So from the priorities and the discussion that I've had with the board, I know that we have a lot more discussion to do, but I did want to show you that there are a few things that are bubbling up in these conversations that might be the start of a discussion about building our budget. conversations that might be the start of a discussion about building our budget. And I look forward to hopefully this board being able to use this document as a springboard for a future discussion, whether it be scheduled as an agenda item, or whether you would want to have a special meeting about your priorities and your focus areas for reductions. And that is my budget update.
Board members, comments, questions for the superintendent?
I was very excited. I see this advertisements on division website and publications. Are other school systems doing that now?
Yes, there are some that do it. It generally brings you minimal dollars, but you know, you see it even on buses in municipalities where they're advertising for a real estate company or that kind of thing. So school buses might be an issue for us because of the state requirements, but there would be opportunities to put business logos on our website, to include business endorsements in the newsletters that we publish. But again, it would be minimal revenue. You wouldn't make a lot of money from doing that.
That's, I mean, I'd be curious to know if it's worth it. That certainly might be a way to, I mean, I really was interested in that, that you put it on there. I don't, you know, to me, in one sense, I don't like the idea, and in another sense, it's another way for the community to contribute. I might prefer to have it go to the foundation, but at the same time, it would be helping our budget. So I think that's a very positive idea, and other systems are doing it.
Yes, there are examples of other systems doing it. But again, it doesn't usually bring you big money, but the list has some little things on it, and it has some things that generate greater amounts of money.
And somewhere we can find your information on the counties. I know that it's, we've got it somewhere.
I've given you the teacher's salary chart. I'm happy to just give you the one I've got here.
Oh, that would be good, because I myself would like to look into seeing if the six that were higher than us, if they are counties that can tax more than just land.
Well, you'd be very interested, actually.
That would be very interesting.
Some of the counties that are paying more than us are, for beginning salaries, are Floyd, Bodatac, Roanoke County, Pulaski, Radford City, Roanoke County, and Salem. At the mid-range, the counties that are paying more than us are the divisions, Radford City, Pulaski, Roanoke County, and Salem. At the top, Craig, Roanoke, Pulaski, Salem, Roanoke County, and Radford. So actually, divisions that you would think that we would be most competitive with are, interestingly enough, some of the ones that are paying more than our current salary schedule allows.
Right. But we pay 100% of the health care, where some of those counties do not, and the employees contribute.
Absolutely.
So their salary is really going toward, to help cover their health care. So there's kind of some little apples, little oranges going on with that.
I think you're exactly right. You can't just look at salary, and you know, in Montgomery County, we've adjusted health care by increasing out-of-pocket, whereas many localities have adjusted it by decreasing the employer contribution and requiring that the employee pay part of the single subscriber cost. Two different ways of accomplishing cost savings.
Yeah, maybe two things going on, what you said and what I said.
Other comments, questions on the worksheet? I guess one of the things I would like to encourage or suggest is this is the worksheet, the priority worksheet the superintendent put together, the red, white, and blue. And I wonder, is this the worksheet that we want to try to discuss and work through at another meeting to help with the priorities? So I think it's important that we give the superintendent, you know, a little more defined list than just a laundry list. You know, is, obviously, compensation is something that we want, but what is the other priority, you know, is it, I'm not sure that we could say all the things in red is the priority, you know?
No. They were mentioned by someone, if they're on that list, but if they have a number beside it, they were mentioned by multiple people.
I'm just trying to look for a way to improve the process at the beginning of this, as opposed to the back end of it, like we did last year. I don't, I would like to not go through what we did last year, if at all possible.
I would hope, I agree with you, and I would hope that Tuesday, teachers, citizens, would give us some insight as to possibly other things that we might want to look into.
Yeah, you're right. I agree with that. So maybe after the meeting on Tuesday, we hear, kind of get a collective feel for what's going to happen on Monday, not Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday. It's Monday night, right? Monday, Brenda Silver shaking her head up and down, Monday. And then maybe look at that list and compare it to what we have given, created here. I'm looking for something a little different than last year as far as, you know, helping the superintendent go off and create a budget that she feels comfortable and confident in creating that's going to have support, or a consensus support, when she brings it back.
So you're proposing another meeting after the 12th?
Either, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion. Do we, after the 12th is, I don't know what the second meeting it looks like on the Tuesday, but do we want to have another meeting just specifically to discuss the priorities in helping narrow down the priorities so that the superintendent can have a more defined target to hit? Because I don't think in some of the years, the target has done this. And I'm just offering to this board to think in a different way as we move forward.
We ought to take into consideration Monday night, after the speakers are finished, if we have time, maybe to discuss. If there's too many speakers, then maybe we need to take it, go home and absorb what they said.
Yeah, I would, I'd like that.
But possibly, we might be able to talk after that.
So we have a meeting today as the, what is...
Right, we have a meeting on the 20th.
On the 20th.
So what about the 27th, the last Tuesday?
I wonder if during the regular meeting on the 21st, I don't know how much we have going on, but look at those lists. And I was just wondering if we could have a framework of questions that we go through with each, with each item. We all have the same kind of set of questions that we think about, like, for example, does this, how much does this save the county? And what are the risks involved in long-term? And then number two would be, what are the effects to the safety and well-being of students? Number three would be, how does it affect instructional time? But we each think about questions like that as it pertains to then this long list of different items. And we have a process that goes around that, attempting to take out a little bit of the emotional energy that is generated with the audience that would be there on a Monday night, kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need some...
Those are just suggestive questions, but I know there's many other kind of thoughts, but...
Could we see what happens on the 12th and then make a decision? Because if we can meet on the 12th...
I think it's better to not meet on that night.
Pardon?
I think it's better to not talk, to have this kind of discussion when you have...
Well, then we have to set a date.
I agree, I think it, so our next meeting is on the 20th, and then Ms. Franklin has proposed the 27th to have a special meeting that we would just talk about our priorities, along with what you're suggesting as far as some guiding questions about, around each component of the budget, and looking at this worksheet, and then look, and that would give administration time to put together a collective overview of the meeting on the 12th, you know, central themes. Did we hear speakers talk about they support races? Did we hear speakers talk about that? So the 27th wrote, that's the Tuesday, the November 27th. Anybody have, do we want to tentatively schedule that now?
Hang on.
Why not?
Are you looking for?
Yeah.
Do you know?
And the reason to not do it in the other meeting is the time?
Well, the 20th is a regular board meeting. I don't know, I don't know what our schedule, do you have any idea what the agenda looks like on the 20th? Let's ask that one.
I don't.
What, Ben?
She's gonna see what we've got in the holding pen for the 20th. I don't know what's in there.
................................................
Okay. So it sounds like it's feasible we could do it on the 20th, so let's just focus on the, thank you.
Is that right? So no 27th?
No 27th.
Very, very nice, very nice.
No 27th, so we can come back on the 20th and talk more about our priorities. Because I do think it's important that we give the superintendent a more defined target to try to hit this year. Any other discussion on the budget?
And the last item then is the calendar of activities for December, I think, November?
November.
November. Oh, see, it's almost January 22nd. I thought you would be here in a hurry, especially if you skip November.
Did we have something on the 19th?
I know that we have, the 13th is the lunch with the legislators, and then the 12th is the meeting at Christiansburg High School on the budget.
The 29th, there's something.
29th is the chamber, where they're going to be recognizing our teachers here.
I just had something on the 19th, and I'm sure I'll scratch it.
Okay.
But not wrongfully.
Unfinished business by school board members. The first item we have under unfinished business is to review the protocol for the meeting next Monday night. That is scheduled to start at 7:00, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
7:00, and we have said it would be a stop, hard-stop time at 10 o'clock, and that we would allow two minutes for each speaker. Is that correct, if I remember from our last meeting? Everybody still in agreement on that? And the public, I think the public understands that we do have a hard stop at 10 o'clock.
Do we know how many people have signed up to speak so far?
There's six or seven.
Okay.
And the point is, if someone wants to speak more at the end, if there's time, they can come back and speak. No?
No.
Oh, really? One speaker, one time only?
Plenty of other opportunities for them to speak.
We are going to have this format where they can fill out paper?
We'll have a paper pencil.
So they can present to us on paper, on paper with pencil? If they want to speak longer than two minutes. Is that it?
No, they get two minutes.
Two minutes. But then somebody could give us something on paper if they want.
They can, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's be clear on what you're talking about happening on that night. You're saying folks will be coming up and handing this up on paper and pencils, is that what you're talking about?
I don't know, they were talking about paper and pencil, I don't know.
Like we did the meetings when we were looking for alternative location for Blacksburg Middle School or Blacksburg High School, we had half-sheets of paper that said, "If you don't want to speak, you can write whatever you want to write on this piece of paper." We then collected them, created a Q and A, and this instance, I would read them to see if there's any idea on there that's not already on our list, and I would provide you with the summary of what's on those papers. Only if it's not already on your list. I wouldn't do tallies of every time something was mentioned.
Thank you.
Any other items, so everybody okay with the protocol next Monday night? I just want to double-check and make sure. Any other items of unfinished business by school board members?
I don't know if this would be considered unfinished or not, but I had brought up the idea of meeting with the House of Representative person that's elected, and I just wanted to know if the board would want to do that. I said I would be glad to try to work with us and with whomever is elected to meet with that person at a given time, those of us who would want to meet with them. And I think it's really crucial that we start having a relationship with the person in Washington. I really do, with all this coming down.
I think it's fine as long as there's only two board members present, because after, if there's three board members present, it's considered, and you're going to discuss school board business with an elected representative, but that's an open meeting, it has to be approved and advertised. I mean, this board would need to say, okay, on this date, we're going to have this meeting, and then it has to be advertised. We don't want to just...
But why couldn't we do that?
I'm not saying we can't, I'm just making sure that we understand, and you just can't call them up and say, "We want to meet on this date."
No, 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 I understand that. I just wanted to know if the board would want to do it. I mean, we haven't in the past, too. Have we met with a national representative? I think it's really important, maybe, is it possible to have representatives from the MCEA meet with us as well, with them? I mean, I would like to do that.
If it fits my schedule, I'm willing to do it.
Yeah. Well, you want me to maybe, whoever's elected, you want me to find out some dates that might work in a meeting meeting?
I think what we need to do is let administration set them up.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And go, like we've done in the past with our other meetings, is if we're in agreement to have the administration contact the newly-elected officials and see when they would be available to meet with us and try to set up some dates and times, and then if it all works out with everybody's schedule, then we can set it and announce it and decide how we're going to do it.
Well, I know when I first brought it up, though, we talked about the fact that the administration is very busy, and I said, "Well, I'd like to try and do it if you wanted me to," but if...
If, yes, let us go for it.
But now, I mean, Brenda, would you feel all right with it?
I'm happy to do it, we're happy to do it. That way, we know exactly what's, what's happening and where it's going to be. But, you know, so that you know, the luncheon has been set for the 13th at Prices Fork Elementary School. We have two yeses and the rest noes. You'll have Delegate Yost and you'll have Delegate Rush present. The others have declined at this point.
And I'm great with that, I just don't care for the luncheons because I never get to come.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, that's a bad thing for that.
I agree.
The dinner we had, and, you know, notice, respect us who's setting it up, I'm sure it works well, but for me, it doesn't. I can't go Tuesday. I mean, so, you know...
And I suggested dinner, I mean, I would...
Well, this is VSBA, take your legislator to lunch.
Absolutely. Wonderful.
So we were trying to do what, you know, VSBA suggests.
But I'm with you, Jane.
So I mean, that's, I mean, are you talking about, like, who are you talking about meeting with?
Whoever's elected today. To our House of Representatives.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know who it'll be. But I think it's important for them to meet with us, and what do you all think about having MCEA reps with us?
That's fine by me. And we just, as long as...
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to...
But I can, I want to restate my concern in making sure that we are in compliance with the open meeting laws.
Oh, sure.
As we go about doing, setting up these meetings. That's my concern.
Absolutely, I'm with you 100%. Thank you, Ms. Blackburn.
Any other items of unfinished business by school board members? New business by school board members, any items by school board members for new business?
We heard tonight about Virtual Virginia and maybe some of the problems with it.
I'd be happy to have Mr. Simkins do a presentation on Virtual Virginia. To my knowledge, there was no call made to my office on that issue, nor was there one made to his office. We assist parents routinely with issues with Virtual Virginia. We don't own Virtual Virginia, they don't work for us necessarily, but we do try to run interference if there are issues that we can help with.
But isn't it true the governor's also suggesting or mandating or somewhere along the line that each student is now going to have to take at least one class virtually?
Yes.
This might help us even in understanding moving forward, because it is a mandate from the governor, is it?
Yes.
Not yet.
It's going to be in the graduation requirements, that's where the change would be.
But it's not law yet, or it's not...
It's scheduled, it's the entering class this year, I believe. Nelson's not here, but I believe it's the entering ninth-grade class of 1213 or 1314. Nelson's not here, but I believe it's the entering ninth-grade class of 1213 or 1314. I don't have it right at my fingertips.
So I'd really like a presentation.
Any other items of new business by school board members? Announcements and information by school board members? Any announcements?
I would like to thank the foundation, thank the foundation, and thank the foundation. I'm sorry, I can't be at, I can be at one. I'm really excited over what y'all have done. Thank you deeply.
Any other announcements and information? Agenda prep is the next upcoming school board meeting. You see the agenda there. We have next Monday night, 7:00 PM, CHS, public forum. We have a lunch with our legislators at Price's Fork Elementary on the 13th at 11:30 AM, and then November the 20th, we have the agenda, as you see before you. I will say one other thing, item under announcements and information, and I think that those of you who are attending VSBA, there's several different events and meetings that might require an RSVP if you'd let Brenda know if we're going to be attending stuff on Wednesday and Thursday. That would be very helpful.
I have RSVP, yes, for everyone.
Okay.
What is that?
So if you don't want to go, let us know.
VSBA, if you're attending VSBA.
In Williamsburg?
Uh-huh.
I'm not going to be able to go this year. No. But speaking of that, I'd like to find out if people would like to go in January to Richmond to lobby with VSBA. Did you all see that on our email? I could bring it up at next meeting, but I find it really helpful to go, and you're going with other people from our area to our legislators to lobby in their office if you're interested.
Okay.
What do you, I said, Dennis, circle it out? I know. Do you think it's good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
All those in favor, signify by a say "ah" for adjourned. Thank you all.
Happy election day!